Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti, and with us this evening, we have Town Council Owen Weaver.
Tom Turente.
Paul Kaplan.
Jenny Bowser, Recording Secretary.
Kevin Cornell.
Jay McGuire.
Jack Emergent, Zoning Administrator.
Okay, we have a request to change the order of a few, a couple of items on our agenda. We'd like to take item number five first, and then the remainder of the agenda in the same order. If that's all right with everybody, is somebody prepared to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
We have a motion. Somebody prepared to second it?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then. First item on the agenda is an eight dash twenty-four referral municipal improvement requested by the Town of Orange Water Pollution Control Authority, WPCA, to establish public sewers on Carlson Road and Bull Hill Lane. Who's here to?
Yeah, I'm here to present, and the chairman for the WPCA, Bob Singler, is here. But you want to invite Bob up to the table?
Yeah, sure.
Or, Bob, you want to come up to the empty seat? Bob Britton, the town engineer, apologized that he had a conflict tonight, otherwise he would have been here. So.
Do you want to just introduce yourself for the?
Bob Singler, Chairman of the WPCA in Orange.
Can I just say your last name?
S.I.G.L.E.R.
Thank you.
A little more fancy than your meetings with the microphone.
Yes, we kind of fly under the radar.
Right. So this is a general statute, eight twenty-four referral to this commission, and generally speaking, an eight twenty-four municipal improvement of referral is required when the legislative body or any other agency of the town wishes to take certain action relative to land. And one of those actions is locating or extending public utilities and terminals for water, sewage, light, power, transit, and other utility services. So in this case, the WPCA is contemplating extending the sewer line onto Carlson and Bull Hill Lane. Currently, there is a private sewer that services about eight properties. There's, in the packet that you got, there's some maps showing where the private sewer is. That sewer line was built, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, in the nineteen fifty's before the town, before the town built its public sewer. And over the years, title is transferred to the properties, and just for whatever reason, it has not been properly maintained. Over the last two or three months, the town has had to come in and make emergency repairs. And at this point, the WPCA is seriously contemplating extending the sewer line to include, or to take over that space, so they would be building a brand-new sewer line. So before they can do that, this board would have to make a referral to the WPCA, whether it be a positive referral, meaning you find it in conformity with the W, uh, W, excuse me, the P O C D, thank you. Or you could reject it, and then they go to the legislature body, and they can overturn you, so to speak, by a majority vote. So it's not, this board's role in the process is not to determine if it's wise to extend the sewer, just whether or not it conforms with the P O C D. So I know you guys have been drafting a new one, and that's almost complete. Bob in his, Bob Britton in his memo pointed out where he thought it was, this proposed sewer line was consistent with the currently, you know, existing two thousand fifteen P O C D, and it continues with the, with the draft. There's already public sewer in that defined area, so if you, if you look at, it's not attached to Bob's memo, it's, I asked Jack to include copies of the two thousand fifteen and the, and the current draft. If you look at the maps where it's showing the service, the sewer service area, excuse me, this is the portion near West Haven, and it's in the top right corner of that atypical shape. There's already, there's already public sewer in, in the area, and as Bob pointed out, he thinks it's consistent with the, he thinks expanding the, the public sewer in this space to include these two roads, or the extension into these roads, is consistent with the current P O C D and the proposed P O C D. So, Bob, I don't know if you have anything to add on that, but that's the gist.
The town has been, on an emergency basis, paying for repairs that have already occurred, failures that have occurred in that section of sewer line on Carlson Road. There's a section that we've approved repair work where the two lines, Carlson Road and Bull Hill Lane, come together. So there's about a hundred and eighty thousand we have spent, the town has spent so far, repairing this basically obsolete line.
For the benefit of the people that use it.
These eight, that's correct. There was a letter sent out to these property owners, putting on notice that we'd be making these repairs, and that we intend to charge them.
Oh, good, that's what I was, next question.
For this, specifically the emergency repairs. But as we're talking about here, the idea long-term is to replace the sewer line on Carlson and Bull Hill.
And that would be on the, the, the town would do it and then charge back over a period of time?
Yeah, it'd be a special assessment.
That's the intention, yeah. So.
So what, by what right do, does the town proceed?
So assuming this board.
It's private.
Oh, but so we, it's in the, in the right-of-way, so the town can go in and replace the pipes. I mean, I guess they could make an eminent domain argument, but.
But nobody's going to oppose?
No, I mean, like.
Because they're not paying sewer use charge.
No, they are paying a sewer use charge with an agreement with West Haven that is administered by the Town of Orange. But they have not paid an assessment on the pipe. So, you know, when, when you bring, hypothetically, when you bring in a new sewer section, the town, any town can impose a special assessment.
Right.
That never happened for these individuals, because the pipe predates the public sewer. So when the town goes in and presumably builds a new section to the public sewer, we will, the WPCA will implement that special assessment procedure to recoup costs for what has already incurred and what will be incurred for the, the building of the pipe.
Okay.
So.
That makes sense. All right, any other questions?
So you're, you're taking care of the, the emergency because of a public health factor?
That's correct.
Okay. Because no one's coming to our house to fix.
Fix.
Yeah, fix our sewer, right, right. But there's every reason to believe that that is a recoverable cost.
Yes.
Okay. And the, it, because it's running in a public right-of-way, and that's the only sections you're planning on replacing, you're seeing that work also as being reimbursable to the town over time as a special assessment?
Yes.
And, and payment of charge.
Because this isn't a small project, that, that type of asbestos pipe has got to be removed as a hazardous material.
Correct.
So, and, and the sewer line itself is going to run a hundred, two hundred bucks a foot by the time it all is smoke clears.
It's a, it's a costly project.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, so it's over a million bucks to run this.
That's the anticipation, yes, we don't have all the quotes in yet, but.
Right. All right. But it, we're not taking over this public responsibility and paying for it, we have a mechanism for the town to get paid back.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Does that, does that? Mechanism include interest as well?
I don't know that off the top of my head, I'll have to.
Presumably, the town is going to be taking money out of its general account, which is in a bank someplace, I would imagine, to pay the contractors to do this.
Right, I mean, the WPCA has its own account, so, yes, but.
Whatever account is being taken out. Well, I would, I would like you to consider that it should be an interest-bearing loan that they pay back, so to speak.
Right, I'll, I'll look, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'll look into that, so.
Okay. But the individual eight properties will be responsible for their own laterals to the main. So Amazon's going to run until they hit Carlson Road, stop. Sorry. So Amazon's going to run until they hit Carlson Road, stop what used to be Stop and Shop, what is it now?
Shop.
Shop, right, is going to have to run over to Carlson Road, and then there's, it looks like some stuff across the street, or.
Yeah, I think like Urban Air might be one of the other properties.
Kohl's, yeah. All right, we're, we're not volunteering to do that.
Do they have the obligation to tie in?
They've already tied in.
So they don't have to replace their, what?
Their laterals?
Yeah.
I don't.
If their la, if those buildings were built, the, the type of pipe that's collapsing went out of use in the late fifty's, early sixty's. So while this might not be currently, you'd use H P V E or something?
Yeah, it's, it's a plastic.
Yeah, the, you know, these may be, you know.
Don't know the condition of the laterals, that again, it's their.
That, but it's their problem.
Right.
Right, and this proposal is not to fix their laterals if there is an issue, so.
That's correct. This is just the main line.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, and just for.
Public health, we get paid back. All right. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, there are a couple of things that you included in the package, Jack, that relate to, you know, the project's conformity with our plan of conservation and development. What was page one, it was on page one twenty-four, I think, of the, I think that's referred to in.
In Bob's memo.
In Bob's memo, one twenty, that's the, the existing plan of conservation and development. And in there, in there it says, manage, one of the, one of the, one of the requirements is to manage sewage treatment, and under that, it says, you know, number one, the strategy is to continue the use of septic systems in most areas of Orange, two, provide sewer avoidance, quote-unquote, in most areas of Orange, and three, which is applicable, maintain sewage capacity at the West Haven Treatment Facility to help accommodate land uses in the economic area and promote new development patterns where desired. That's so, that seems quite on, on point to me. And then I, and then in our, you know, pending plan of conservation and development, I think that's where this comes from, Jack.
Yes.
Under eight point four, manage sewage treatment and public water safety, uh, water supply, eight point four point one says maintain, you know, one of the goals is to maintain the capacity of Orange's public water and sewer systems. And under eight point four point three, evaluate necessary infrastructure upgrades and cost estimates for incorporating additional properties into existing inter-municipal sewer agreements. I, I am reading from the.
Correct.
The draft, okay. I think those were the high points of, of what.
Yes.
What was, you know, what was pointed out in the, in Bob Britton's memo to us. So, I don't know, project seems, makes sense to me, and I think all we're doing under eight dash twenty-four is giving it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. We obviously have no responsibility for any, any approval or, or whatever. But all we need is a vote.
That's correct, yep.
A vote to, and I presume it'll be a favorable, favorable vote for the project. So, somebody prepared to make a motion on that?
I'll move that we make a motion to approve the project proposed by Robert Britton, as, as put forth by Owen, within the parameters that we discussed, meaning getting paid back and over a period of time, and fixing the emergency stuff, but not taking care of the, or not being responsible for the lateral connections. Connections, yeah, thank you.
All right, we have a motion to approve for a favorable referral, and we have a second?
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Is that part of what we're supposed to be doing, or just seeing if it conforms? Are we worried about the cost, or are we just wondering if it conforms with what currently is in our plan?
My understand, my understanding is that it's the latter, you know, that it, you know, that strategically, it conforms with our plan of conservation and development. As to whether it's a good idea or how it ranks in.
As long as he's here, we give our two cents.
Yeah. You know, how it ranks with other municipal projects, you know, where they get the money for it, I mean, it's all.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, technically, the cost is not really within this board's jurisdiction. I, I appreciate the comments, and I will take those back to the WPCA, but you're voting strictly on whether you believe the referral is, conforms with the P O C D, or if it doesn't, so.
Yeah.
Should I amend my motion to say it conforms with the P O C D?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so again, do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
All right, you're good to go, Bob, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
You're posted.
All right. Next item on our agenda is a review of the minutes from the August nineteen, twenty Jenny, I had just one typo.
Okay.
Under old business, it says there was no new business.
Okay.
So I think that, I think with that correction, I'm comfortable with the minutes.
No, 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 thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have anything on that?
No.
I put that in there to see if anybody's.
Make sure that everybody read it.
Yes.
No? Everybody's good? Okay. So a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, as amended.
A second?
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Next item then would be old business, and this is really why we have Owen here with us tonight, he's gonna give us an overview of a couple of statutes.
Right, I invited my partner Barbara Schellenberg to, to assist with this one, so if it's all right, Mr. Chairman, invite Barbara up.
Of course it is.
Yeah, I just happened to give a land use seminar recently, so I was a little bit more up to date on this.
You should have told us, we could have come and met our.
Met some of the training requirements, yeah.
It was up in, it was up in Westbrook, but we'd be happy to do that for Orange as well, certainly.
Absolutely.
We've done it in the past. So I don't, I don't know how familiar everybody is with this bill. This was a very comprehensive and controversial housing bill, and I'm happy to go over, you know, the major points that dealt with land use. Now, of course, as you're aware, the governor ultimately vetoed this bill, but it's definitely coming back in some modified form, actually, at the end of this month, there's going to be a special legislative session. So I think a lot of what I'm going to point out is key land use features are still going to be there. You know, obviously, we don't know exactly what modifications there will be. So zoning regulations have to allow the as-of-right development of middle housing on any commercially zoned lot, with very few exceptions related to health and safety. And middle housing constitutes a residential building with two to nine dwelling units, and that would include, but not be limited to duplexes, triplexes, townhomes. Zoning commissions must establish what's called a priority housing development zone, which includes not less than ten percent of the total developable land within a municipality, and that zone would need to permit as-of-right multifamily housing. So at a minimum, it would have to allow four units per acre for single-family detached housing, six units per acre for duplexes or townhouses, and ten units per acre for multifamily housing. Municipalities are also required to develop what's called a priority affordable housing plan that sets forth their plans for creating affordable housing, including how zoning regulations will be amended to accommodate suggested housing allocations. For example, the bill mandated that municipalities plan for and accommodate twenty-five percent of their affordable housing allocation through changes to their zoning. So that's significant. And again, this, this kind of thing is across the board for every municipality in Connecticut. Municipalities that have regulations allowing for transit-oriented development will have priority for state infrastructure grants. I know that's something that, right, Orange did in the past, I remember, you know, being in, being involved, right, being involved with that. Um, this is, this, this is really sticking in a, in a lot of people's craw for, for good reason. If a municipality loses an affordable housing appeal in court, and there's a determination that the municipality acted in bad faith, the municipality has to pay the plaintiff's attorney's fees, without any reciprocal law that would, you know, require the plaintiff to have to pay, pay fees if the plaintiff acted in bad faith. Zoning regulations cannot enforce minimum off-street parking standards for housing developments of one to twenty-four units, and commissions cannot reject an application solely on the basis that such development fails to conform with any requirement for off-street parking. Now, we've heard through the grapevine that there's likely going to be a modification on these parking requirements, but again, we're not sure exactly what that's going to be.
Can you say, can you say the first part of that paragraph?
The zoning, uh, commissions cannot reject an application, quote, solely on the basis that such development fails to conform with any requirement for off-street parking, end quote. Yeah, pretty restrictive. So at the time that Governor Lamont ultimately vetoed the bill, the Senate Democrats were negotiating with him, because they were very much in favor of this, and as a matter of fact, they even wanted to bolster the bill with certain additional requirements, like a provision that would increase state reimbursement rates for school construction projects in municipalities that have at least a ten percent affordable housing minimum. And it was when they were negotiating that the government ultimately decided to veto. Now, CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, was very involved in this, as you can imagine, and they urged a veto. They wrote a letter to the governor, and basically, what they said is that the bill includes the implementation of the fair share housing model and broad state zoning mandates that significantly erode local control and imposed unrealistic, one-size-fits-all requirements on towns and cities across Connecticut. And then they listed a whole bunch of provisions that they had objection to. So I would expect that CCM will remain involved, as we see, you know, modifications coming from the legislature, because I know everybody's interested, you know, what, what can you do? So I think you can certainly through CCM make your opinions known, obviously, you can make your opinion, opinions known to state representatives.
But there's nothing we can do to our regulations, we can't amend our regulations in any way to avoid.
I don't think so. I, no, I don't, I don't think there's any opt-out provision, like you're thinking about the previous legislation that had certain opt-outs.
ADU opt-outs, yeah.
ADU opt-outs, parking opt-outs. I don't think this legislation includes anything like that.
I have one question on this, was there any language in the proposed bill that addressed towns like Orange with the eight thirty G moratorium for the next three years?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
No. I don't think there was any exceptions made for.
Would we still be more or less safe from an eight thirty G application, even if something?
That's a good question, I, yeah, I don't, not necessarily, no.
But they're not coming in under eight thirty G. These are going to be as-of-right, written into your zoning regulations.
How about the effect of, of the, of septic, I mean, we don't have any sewers.
Well, that's, I was going to ask that question under item two, where, you know, you have to allow, yeah. Now, are, are these going to be subject to health, you know, legitimate health and safety concerns about sanitary sewer disposal? I mean, we don't have sewers.
Right, so, right, there's some exceptions for that, but it's limited. That's why CCM's, you know, one of the main reasons they strongly urged a veto, because this is a one-size-fits-all kind of bill, that doesn't take into consideration how, you know, small towns differ from large cities, et cetera.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, it's very problematic in a number of respects.
But with respect to our regulations, okay, I mean, whatever's going to happen at the state level is going to happen, okay? But I think that we can look at our existing regulations. For example, she, you know, Barbara mentioned that, that in every commercial district, on a lot, you have to allow this middle housing of between two and nine units, all right? So between two and nine units is very profitable on lots that would be like a half acre, okay? I mean, the magic number in development's twenty units an acre, you know, that people want to try and achieve. Our current commercial regulations allow small lots, or I would consider them small lots, it's what in the C one?
Yeah. Take a look. I think it's twenty thousand?
Okay, so.
I'll confirm right now.
Yeah.
Less than half an acre.
So let's, 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 let's use that number while Jack confirms. So in my mind, if I wanted to abuse the town, and I had a ten-acre commercial lot, I'd subdivide it into half-acre lots, put nine units on, all of a sudden, we got a hundred and eighty units.
Twenty-five thousand square feet, a lot.
Basic, so a little less. So one thing we could do that is consistent is we could consider, and it wouldn't affect anyone in the town, and it would give us more of a handle on what's coming into our town, would be to revise the minimum lot size to something where that two to nine units that we're forced to allow is no longer profitable. You know, make it an acre, make it two acres, or whatever.
Do we have that, do we have that kind of latitude, though?
Why not? We, we, we can create our, our minimum lot size.
The bill doesn't supersede?
I think it might.
How?
Yeah, I, you know what?
It's per lot.
Again, this is, I, I really think you have to wait and, and see ultimately what is going to be the final legislation and, and work with that. You know, we just don't know right now exactly what's going to be in, what's going to be out.
Yeah.
Or how it might be modified.
So Kevin, you're trying to address the hypothetical of somebody's got a five-acre lot, and it is, don't let them subdivide it into half acres, make them subdivide it into an acre. An acre, or two acres, whatever. I mean, you pick a number where now, all of a sudden, it's not attractive to take commercial land, which is a net positive economic gain for the town.
Yeah.
To residential, which is, if anything, flat, you know? But, you know, you definitely, it's, it, you know, because obviously, since we qualify for the ten percent moratorium, we're not afraid of housing, per se, or people, per se. We just want it to be thoughtful and done at a scale where the essential character of Orange isn't changed. Uh, I'm sorry, just one person's opinion.
No, you know, we'll see if we have the flexibility to do.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if that's going to be possible.
Well, it may be. You're suggesting do it now?
I'm suggesting why not? What's the, what, what is the downside? There, there is no legislation that we're in violation of. The, the, the legislation that was written contemplates on a commercial lot, we're empowered to change, modify our regulations to, you know.
There's no corrigending with the application, it would affect.
No, and the people who have lots smaller than whatever we choose are existing non-conforming and can do whatever the heck they want.
Would it affect?
Would it affect their ability to refinance, or do any, you know?
Why? I mean, the people exist in that characteristic all over the town. Hmm. Yeah, maybe it'd be a good.
Yeah, maybe it'd be a good idea for Jack to do a study as to the sizes of the lots in the commercial zone to see how many might be affected.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's all sorts of small guys out there.
Yeah, they're gonna range from.
Well, all right, so a study that identifies all above an acre or to whatever, you know, number you pick.
You know, every commercial lot that's above an acre, acre and a half, whatever the board feels.
You know, and again, this is, I, I, this is just anticipatory. In trying to retain a level of control, it's, you know, personally, if, you know, there was some more affordable housing on the post-road, that's probably a good place for it. But I'd like it to be, you know, thoughtful and not just an as-of-right, you know, you know, jamming a, something down our throats, but.
With the understanding of that.
The downside would be if the legislation, Bigfoots it, you know, so to speak, and, and doesn't allow for the local control.
Well, if they don't, if they, instead of calling it a lot, they say allows nine units per half acre, you know, that it's, that's what it's gonna say. And, you know, you didn't, you know, you didn't gain some control you hoped to, but you're in no different position than you're, we're gonna be if you did nothing. It, it, you know, it's just, do you, you know, you know, it's just a question of, do you, do you wait to get punched in the face or do you hold your hands up?
There's a chance that putting up our, our hands would, would protect us. Why not do it?
You just want to have a say, you know, I mean.
How many lots you think it would affect, Jack?
Most of our commercial lots are, I would say, over an acre. Certainly not all of them. You know, I'm looking at a lot right now that's point seven acres.
Right.
And our current, yeah, twenty-five thousand square feet, so.
Right, you know, but, a-again, just, just an opinion.
No, no, that's, that's okay. I, I get it, you know. This is, again, I think the biggest problem with this bill, why it's so controversial because it rests so much local control. And it's a one-size-fits-all, which doesn't take into consideration how different municipalities have very different issues and concerns. Again, that's why CCM is in the forefront with it. On the other hand, there's certainly a lot of pressure on the governor to, you know, sign something. So, I, I do think we can expect some legislation probably that's gonna come out of the special session at the end of the month that likely he will, he will sign off on.
Do we have copies of the bill that we could circulate?
Um, I, I, yeah, I sent them around when this was being discussed. I could definitely get hard copies for everybody at the next meeting. And, I mean, tomorrow I'll, I'll resend it out. It's what, five zero zero one or five zero zero three?
House Bill five oh oh two.
Two, okay.
There's a lot of other things in there too, you know, that are not directly related to land use. There's provisions dealing with the homeless and.
CHRO can enforce zoning, like you can bring a zoning enforcement action into the CHRO. There's fair, Orange is slightly below, but there was a fair rent commission requirement for municipalities fifteen thousand or more. So, you know, if we add too many more people, we'll have to deal with that. There's, there's a lot.
Right, the fair, actually, the fair rent commission legislation came out a couple of years ago for larger municipalities. Like Greenwich, for example, had to, had to form a fair rent commission. So, yeah, now they're, they're lowering, they're lowering the number. So, yeah, it's, it's a very comprehensive bill. It covers a lot of areas.
All right.
I really just went over the major land use.
I can recirculate that.
Yeah, I mean, we all should take a, a look at it again, with Kevin's suggestion in mind.
We have commercial lots.
And maybe you can give it some, some further thought, Owen.
We have commercial lots from ten acres to less than half an acre. And there's a lot of, lot of varying parcels on, on the post-road. It's not very uniform.
And what, what?
Kind of size are you talking about doing as a minimum?
I mean, I was thinking of just starting the discussion. But if it stayed in its current format and, and you were, the max you were subject to was nine, it could be an acre because.
That would do the trick.
Well, you know, it, it's like, it's not that attractive though. It's not as attractive.
Financially, not, not, yeah.
You know, and, and if it does happen, it actually can exist with a reasonable amount of what will become illegal parking on it. Illegally asked for parking.
Right.
Because, you know, those nine units are gonna generate eighteen spaces. And eighteen spaces are gonna, you know, take up about five thousand square feet of floor plan. So, you know, you can wind up with just like, you know, on a small lot, a little thin strip of green, asphalt, and housing.
Right.
And just like chump, 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 chump. And, and I don't wanna live in barracks.
Right.
But, you know, something thoughtful like Smith Farms, I think, is a tremendous benefit to the town. The Smith Farm, you know, you drive by the Smith Farm, it disappears.
Yeah.
It's affordable, it's very nice, you know? I, you know, but I think the possibility for, you know, people putting in, I, I, I think the possibility of greed creating bad projects exists.
Well, I don't think we have much downside by, by doing it, at least none that I've heard so far.
Oh, you know, but that, that is just one aspect, I mean, the.
Well, one that we have control of right now.
Yeah, that we may have control, right, yeah.
All right. Well, like I said, I think we should give this some further thought. And, you know, consider an amendment to the regulations that, you know, like Kevin said, if there's no, you, you pointed out there's no downside to it, then, you know, maybe it's something that, it is, it is only one part of the bill, but it's, you know, one thing we may be able to.
That may affect us directly. I mean, there were, but, there was a bunch of stuff that Barbara said that I don't, I, I just don't, doesn't compute with me, which is septic issues and how many, the, the intensity is off the charts relative to what, you know, we have to offer because we don't have any, any sewers.
Right. I mean, the, yeah, a couple of these, like the as-of-right development of middle housing does have some exception related to health and safety concerns, so that.
Yeah, but on the, but on the post-road, that doesn't exist, there's a sewer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Right. It's, it's, when you reach out into the residential districts with the must-have this, must-have that, you know, four units on an acre is, you know, that's, that's a lot to ask a septic system to do.
That's a lot of ground coverage.
Well, but what's, I mean, where this is all heading, just from an engineering standpoint, is what hap, is happening on Long Island. Where now, e, individual buildings have to have their own sewer, sewer control, you know, denitrification plant.
Right.
And so, you know, you know, basically, they're putting onsite sewage treatment plants for a warehouse, some design with some people.
Nassau and Suffolk.
Uh, Suffolk, you know, and, you know, but they need to protect their drinking water. And Connecticut, last time I looked into it, didn't allow privately run sanitary systems.
There, there's nothing we need to worry about in the residential?
But, but they will, if they, if, if they don't get what they need.
I mean, this is all directed toward commercially zone.
No, no, I mean, you've got to establish that priority housing development zone.
The middle housing is a commercial.
Right, the middle housing is commercial. But the priority housing development zone has to include not less than ten percent of the total developable land within a municipality. So it, it would exclude things like wetlands, you know, places that you can't develop. But anywhere you could develop, it has to be at least.
Do we have any idea which are developable?
Ten percent.
Our land is developed now, excluding.
No, 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 it, it, you're gonna take the whole land mass.
I'm sure that that's gonna take into account residential.
And you're gonna take out the inland wetlands stuff.
Steep slopes.
You're gonna, and, and you're gonna come up with X hundred acres that this is gonna have to apply to.
And I don't think the area that we current, currently outline in our P O C D where we're more willing to accept applications, you know, with, with this sort of development, just off the top of my head, I, I don't think that would be enough to get us to that ten percent, right? We're pretty much south of the post-road is right now where we identify that possibility.
And not industrial zone property?
No, it's specifically addressed industrial zones, no. Just the middle housing on the commercial zone.
Yeah, the eight-thirty G used to address, uh, non-industrial.
Exempt industrial, but.
Because they understood that while some portions of the state might, might wanna be a bedroom for New York City, that other parts may wanna go to work and, and, you know, have those people pay taxes.
The reason you're seeing this is because eight-thirty G hasn't worked, right? It hasn't achieved its, its goals, and that's why.
Well, we did. We did.
Overall, statewide, it hasn't, it hasn't been particularly successful. It's been, you know, kind of a boon for developers, but.
Yeah.
Otherwise, not, not achieving the affordable housing, that was so.
All right. Anything else, Barbara?
That's what I, that's what I'm here for today.
Great, thanks for the good news.
Sorry. Maybe next time I'll have good news. I'll ask Owen to, you know, for next time.
Right, so.
Give, give me a better assignment.
That was, no, that, that was very, very helpful.
Great.
Very helpful, thank you.
Good to see everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
All right, so let's, yeah, let's, keep that in, in top of our minds, so. Did she, not Barbara just went out, but what's, what's sort of the timeframe on this? I mean, that, that.
It's my understanding it'll be called.
That could happen soon.
Yeah, at the end of the month. I'm not sure how long it'll be, but, yeah, I would anticipate something in, in October or maybe early November.
Okay. All right.
I would suspect before the election.
Yeah, one, one last, just question on, in, on old business 'cause it has to do with the P O C D. While I was looking at the draft, I just, there's some language that I don't know why it's in there. And I don't, you know, and.
Something that was circulated for his.
So, page, uh, page eight of the draft on the, the su, under sewage treatment, the last sentence says, "If there is continued interest in incorporating additional properties into the existing intermunicipal sewer agreements, further," are we considering adding any additional land? Uh, where did the language come from? I'm not considering any additional land.
Where, where, where are you?
Page eight, last sentence, uh, it's sorry, the.
This was in the.
P O C D Infrastructure, chapter eight.
Yeah, we handed out for the municipal improvement.
Yeah, that was attached to Bob's memo.
No, no, uh, no.
No, this was the second kind of packet that you got with it. It may be in that.
I thought he.
Take a look through, you know?
I mean, I have a plan of conservation and development, but I think he.
Do you have a?
I think he included that page eight.
Yeah, no, I had, I had asked Jack to include the relevant two thousand fifteen provision and then.
Well, this is two thousand fifteen, not, not the current one?
No, one, one is from two thousand fifteen and the other one had the.
The page that you are looking at is, is the, the new proposed one.
Oh, okay.
So you are correct.
All right, so my question to us, since this is our document, is this something we asked for?
What, what, what paragraph are you looking at?
Final paragraph, last sentence. "If there is continued interest in incorporating additional properties into the existing intermunicipal sewer agreements, further investigation is needed to address the cost of feasibility."
Well, I, if you look at, if you look at, it was also in the packet. Let me see, give me a second to find it, Kevin.
No problem, sir.
In our, in our packets, there was a, it's page one twenty-four of the existing plan of conservation and development. You see what I'm talking about?
I'm sorry, no.
All right, page, page one twenty-four, in the, in the, in the margin, under sewage, sewage disposal.
Yeah.
It talks about, it says to address sewage disposal needs Town of Orange entered into an agreement with the city of West Haven in nineteen eighty-five, whereby the town can send up to a million gallons per day of sewage waste to the West Haven Treatment Facility for treatment and discharge. Then the next paragraph, it points out that we're only using about three hundred and fifty thousand
Right.
of that capacity. So I guess the suggestion is that, you know, to the extent it's feasible, that it makes sense, we should utilize that available, or can utilize that available capacity.
Yeah, but that, that, I, that's not what our, the P O C D says. The P O C D says, "Add additional properties." This, two thousand fifteen defines an area around the post-road and industrial districts that are both currently sewered and to be sewored. I don't perceive on adding any, you know, I don't want somebody looking at this language saying, you know, oh, well, let's, let's run a lateral up to Judy's golf course, you know, uh, north of the post-road. That's an additional property.
Kevin, do you mean, do you mean outside of the possible future sewer, sewer service area, which is the blue section in, in the bottom? If you look at the two thousand fifteen map of the sewer service area.
Correct, the blue.
Right, yeah, so you'll see.
Yeah, I don't, that, I, I don't, I don't think anything north of that commercial zone in the post-road that we have any intents of, you know, running a sewer up there, do we? I mean, it's our, the twenty twenty-five's our document. Do we have any interest in doing that?
I, I don't know. But it says, "If there, if there is continued interest in incorporating additional properties into existing intermunicipal sewer agreements, further investigation is needed to assess the cost of feasibility." I mean, I, I don't, I don't see that as binding us to anything.
And I don't see it as being useful for anything 'cause we're not planning on doing it. So why have it in?
Well, that.
What I, what I was getting at is that we have more capacity in our intermunicipal.
Yeah, why didn't we ask for a million ga, agree to a million gallons max?
Because the, the uses over time can change on the post-road and something that was a warehouse can become a restaurant and go from three hundred gallons a day to thirteen thousand gallons a day. So that was, that was future-proofing the, the existing.
But that's what number three did here, right?
Yeah, right, that's the old one, right.
Looks like they just reworded it more vague.
Well.
I think that's what they're trying to achieve there is what they, three says currently. But I think you're right, it opens a door that isn't contemplated here.
Again, I look at these things of, what's our plan? Our plan is, what we have works. We like to have a commercial zone surrounding ninety-one, ninety-five and Route One. That's south end of town. I don't want to entertain going into this, you know, quote-unquote sewer avoidance area or bringing it up as a topic to be then, you know, have a smart guy like, you know, Owen on the other side saying, "Well, this is consistent with your twenty twenty-five P O C D. What were you thinking?"
Right.
I, you know, just, again, just personally. I, you know, if it doesn't serve our purpose, it's a, it's, it's errata. It's, it's language that can't, doesn't exist for our benefit. Unless there's a, a. Unless there's a, a taste in the town that I haven't heard in any of the P O C D for running sewer, which means high-density housing up into, you know, the bulk of Orange. But, so, you know, I would.
Well, the way it's worded, it certainly opens the door for that, even though it's very, it is, I, I mean, there's no way to say it, it's, it's very vague.
Yeah.
But there's no, I don't see the point, if you take it out, what is it, what does it hurt if you, if you yank it, you know?
Yeah, it goes from vague to nonexistent.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it, again, it's a suggestion, it's a document that's a draft, but.
Yeah.
We should discuss those things and then, 'cause this is gonna.
I wonder why they.
Not be a draft short.
I don't think we directed this at all, right, this was, this was generated from.
No, I think they just used, you know, input from the town and language that was in our last P O C D and.
Right.
Ended here.
I, I think, I think it's, what they propose, you know, what we propose now, what's in our draft now is probably, it's consistent with what was, what's in the existing.
Well, as Jay said, I think they, they messed around with the language a little bit.
And, and that's what they should do, because they're counting on us to actually read the language and let them know if we've got a problem.
Well, all right, that's fine, I mean, I, we could take that up when we, at a public hearing.
Next, next meeting, yeah, that's a, that's a great point to make, and.
Okay.
If the board has, over the next two weeks, says, you know, I think it just makes more sense to get rid of it, that's, that's what we're there in two weeks to do.
I mean, you, you're, you're, I guess then you'd be unhappy with the, the language that's in the existing plan of conservation and development.
Well, the, the existing one, just, you know, if I'm reading it, says, number one, I agree with. Continue the use of septic systems in most of the areas of Orange.
So you agree with number two.
And number two, I agree with, and then three, just says, "Maintain your agreements to take care of your industrial stuff." I mean, you know, your industrial and commercial properties, but I don't see anything wrong there. I mean, personally, I would not have been in favor of Fieldstone Village, but some people like it, you know?
Yeah, well, all right, we, we could bring this up at our, at our, our meeting on the plan of conservation. I don't, I don't see much difference between that, you know, what we had in the existing.
It's certainly vague enough where it doesn't.
Yeah.
It doesn't tie us to anything.
Right, I mean, I don't see it. All right, what else? Who did?
New business.
We're, we're under, anything else under old, old business, Dave? Okay, now, how about under new business? Okay, Jack, you have a report for us then?
Sure, short and sweet tonight, the result of the appeal was a denial of the appeal, this is for the Airbnb issue that we spoke about at our last meeting, to deny the appeal and uphold the notice that I was issued with modifications. So that was issued, and compliance was required immediately with that modified letter.
Who, who did the appeal go to, the zoning board of?
The zoning board of appeals, correct.
And when they upheld your.
Ceasing the system.
Ceasing to exist, what were the modifications that they?
They included language that all commercial activities should stop on the property, that, that was it, which.
Okay.
And I think immediately.
Immediately, correct.
There was some question about whether it should be for a.
We should give them ten days to, it wasn't changed really that enough to where they felt more time was, yeah, would, would have, you know, made any improvement there. So that was the result of the appeal.
Has the appeal, has, has there been an appeal beyond?
We have not heard as of yet.
How many days did it have, thirty or something?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen from the publication of the public hearing.
Which ends when?
Twelfth or the thirteenth, I think, somewhere around there.
Okay, a bigger number for them. That's, that's an appeal to.
To the. Yeah, that would be an appeal to courts.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir, then the last thing I have is, just two weeks from now, we will have our P O C D public hearing. It has been noticed, I do not know how much interest from the public will have, but this will pretty much be our last process to offer any amendments that, that we may have, like Kevin pointed out tonight. It doesn't have to be closed on the sixteenth, we, we could continue that if we, you know, are getting enough input or we think we need a little more time. But we are closing out this process, so.
How does the public know, or if they were, where are we advertising?
It's, it's been noticed for quite some time now, we've been talking about it for over two months. I also, there should be a informational sheet in here, this is what we will be handing out at the, the P O C D meeting. So if anybody's interested, you know, or hasn't been involved in the process at all, they can come here, learn, you know, what we're talking about and give any input they have.
We should include Jay's name on that.
Oh, on, on, oh, okay, uh, get, get rid of Judy?
No, I don't get rid of Judy.
Add, add both, all right, no, I like it.
Judy who?
Yeah.
For the benefit of the four people in the audience, could you just reiterate the different mechanisms we've tried to reach out to the public in terms of, these are the different avenues that people can get information from? You know, because every once in a while, I hear someone say, "Oh, I don't know."
Oh, I didn't know about that.
Yeah.
Sure, so we started this process over a year ago, in two thousand twenty-four. We have had regularly scheduled meetings here where we have discussed this. We have had two public workshops in the community center where that was the main avenue for people to show up, give their input, you know, offer any suggestions that they have for this new document that may be different from the old. We also did the survey, if people remember, where we had a survey, I think we got two, a little over two hundred and twenty responses. That survey was open for several months to members of the public, it was in the community center, it was in the library, it was here in Town Hall. Members of the public were encouraged.
Is it on their website at all?
It is on, it is on the website, thank you, it's also posted online for anybody to have access to there. Both of these public workshops were publicly noticed as if they were public hearings, so that followed the same noticing process. You know, next week, or two weeks from now, a public hearing will follow.
Out of curiosity, I know this is live, does it also go on to like?
It does, you can watch these meetings at any time on, on YouTube.
Okay, so.
And they're replayed.
All right, so the, so the meetings on the P O C D.
Absolutely, yeah, these, these public, public workshops should be available online on the O G A T YouTube channel. So if anybody, you know, was unable to attend those, they can watch them and then come here and, and bring any input that they have.
We have a complete draft.
We have a complete.
Of the proposed plan of conservation development.
That has been referred to SCROG and our Board of Selectmen.
Okay, that was my next question, does the, will the Board of Selectmen respond, or?
Yeah, try to remember if they took it up at the last meeting, not like, feel like they do, but, to think back, but, yeah, they'll, they'll vote on it, I believe.
Vote on it, will they, and, and they could possibly have some changes to suggest in it.
Yes, there was some, there was some public commentary about it, excuse me, at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, but, I apologize, it escapes me now what was, what was that? I think it was general positive, positive comments about the.
Right. All right, but I mean, obviously, there's still opportunity to make some changes to it.
Sure, and that was a sixty-five day review period for the Board of Selectmen and for SCROG, which we are beyond now.
Okay.
All right, that's on.
September sixteenth.
September sixteenth, okay.
Here, seven o'clock, Orange Town Hall.
All right, does anybody have anything else for Jack? We all set?
Move to adjourn?
Our agenda is complete, yes.
Move to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Wasn't a question.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, okay, thank you very much.
Almost like a real meeting.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you, everybody.